It is nine o'clock. Please silence and shut off your cell phones and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Albersen would you please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do we have any additions to the legions?
Yes, I have one for action today if possible. It's the public health equity plan.
All right, our first timed item, Clara Morris on the countywide COVID-19 survey findings. If you'd like, you can feel free to step on up here.
Have a seat.
Yeah. Morning.
Morning.
Thank you all for indulging me today. I know this is a topic that we are very much finished with talking about, and that is not the approach and angle or anything that I'm sharing today. Today, I am thanking you for your leadership and service to the county throughout this really difficult time for everyone. And I just want to share my, you know, who I am. I'm an American Orvista that is serving with the Lake Health District. I am also a 4-H Club volunteer. I'm a Kids' Corner volunteer, and I'm also an EOC CEO member, and I feel comfortable sharing that. So today, I am sharing a certain, the solutions to explore from the findings and feedback that I received from the countywide COVID-19 survey. These are just looking at the impacts that folks have had throughout this time, specifically for our EOC CEO members. So we are basically addressing topics that maybe you guys have already discussed, and I want to just share that I hope that if this has been discussed, then hopefully this will bolster whatever information you all need. And I'm supposed to be sharing recommendations, and that is not what I am going to be doing today. I am, because there's no obligation to pursue any of this, and I completely understand that you have more than enough on your plate, especially with the fires that have been impacting our communities, and I want to reserve my space and the space for you all to simply absorb and see what our friends and neighbors have been enduring throughout this time as well. So simply sharing the insight from the data that we've gathered, along with the professionals and expertise of their, their help that I've been grateful to work with over these past few months. So the first slide.
Sorry. Stand by. Stand by.
No worries.
Maybe.
I have one at the top.
I did, I managed to pull. She sent me this slide, but I don't know if Commissioner Albersen or Commissioner Schillingberger will be able to see it.
Exactly, and I unfortunately do not bring copies of the paper of it. I do have a USB bit on it, but if that's not the case, I could simply just walk through with, since it's a dark night.
There, it's showing up there.
Okay, thanks for your patience.
Don't worry.
They're used to it.
So this was our first talking point, so I'm just gonna jump right in. This is kind of the nitty-gritty stuff of basically just how we did this survey, what it means. So first, we were looking at social determinants of health, which is basically conditions of the environment that we work, learn, work in play. So maybe that's how our transportation impacts, how we get to medical appointments or internet access, all of these things, or food access. So these were the topics that we were trying to explore. And this was also an adapted survey, because I didn't want to, we didn't want to reinvent the wheel, which was basically condensed down from over 56 questions, which is way too much to be asking people to serve to fill out, so it'd be condensed it to 26. Half of those questions were basically asking, quote, "Since the beginning of the pandemic, X, Y, Z." So these questions, "Since the beginning of the pandemic, have you struggled to pay for a bill because you had to, because you had to buy food for your family?" These sorts of questions. You know, limitations are, you know, we weren't looking at nursing, people in nursing homes, prisons, or hospitals. Also, respondents were asked about their experiences since the start of the pandemic. So these reported experiences also may not have been directly caused by the outbreak. So understanding that as well. And this is looking at a probability base, so this is, you know, just looking at a sample of, you know, and then applying that to the larger county demographic. So we were, we basically had 84 adults fill out the survey, and then we had to condense it down to about 75. And so with that, that was because all those surveys weren't filled out or weren't complete. So just jumping right in, basically, some of the challenges that folks had were basically food insecurity, which is a chip priority. So some of the solutions we have come up with, with my team, folks at the Health District, we have understood that having maybe emergency funds allotted to entities working with food insecurity, like Food Share or Kids' Corner, those have been really awesome resources for people throughout this time, and I know that that has been a source of support for folks. We're also, we've also been talking about a Lake County resource guide to make available to SNAP recipients or anyone that's applying for it at our THX office. So the next, the next three bullet points and the challenges, they are also, they are related, so that's why it looks like a lot, but they actually are speaking to one, one aspect, which is economic opportunity. So 40, you know, 42% of respondents had trouble paying bills, maybe they were in cramped housing, and we also asked about income levels, and 55% were in that 25,000 to 50,000 income earning range, which I think this would support the housing need survey that's coming up soon for multifamily housing, just understanding where people are economically, as well as indicating that 77% of respondents had these problems before the pandemic as well. So most of these were work and employment, health and well-being, which speaks to mental health and financial problems, and these three aspects were indicated as current problems that folks are having as well. So moving right along.
So can we go back to your first, very first one?
Yeah.
There's a, okay. Let's get the one that, that one.
Yeah.
Where it said 24%.
Oh, shoot, yes. Sorry.
There you go.
Yes.
So they, to get that straight, 24% of the population that responded?
Yes.
Didn't pay other bills because they needed food?
That's correct, sir.
Okay.
Yes. Yes, you could certainly ask questions. So moving to the next section. So other challenges for that 48% of folks had indicated a negative impact from their social and physical isolation, and this has been pretty talked, pretty much talked about within the community. I wasn't surprised by this at all, but some of these solutions that we've talked about with my team are understanding that a lot of safety checks happen at the sheriff's office, so having, so elderly folks will usually go in just to like talk and hang out, so maybe there's something with that collaboration between sheriff's office and public health or whoever would be able to support those resources, whatever they would want to do or they find any recommendation that they would want to take on, understanding that that is their own business to take care of. So another item could be the Outback Strong Village, which is a program that we have, that we have not really utilized, which is basically a hotline where people can call in and say, "I have a service to share. I can, I'm a carpenter, I'm a painter, I can, I'm good with technology." And so we take down a list and say, "Okay, like, we've got these group of people that can do these things," and then perhaps someone in need, an elderly or senior citizen might call in and say, "Hey, you know, my porch needs to be redone, but I don't have anyone to do that. Do you guys have someone?" And they will connect those people, and that will be relationship building and really creating a positive relationship between our programs and our community members. Community Solutions is also like this as well. I am talking to GOBE right now, which is Greater Oregon Behavioral Health Initiative, to see if they are still enacting this program, and so I'm in the talks with them, and I will definitely need to follow up and see that this is still active. To my knowledge, it is, but that is something I will double check. I've also talked to Michael Carter, the superintendent from the school district here over the year, and he is very interested in having a program where they collaborate with the senior center here and the students in the home economic classes at the school. So maybe birthdays, they make a cake and bring it over to the senior center. So that also helps the kids, connect with the community, and, and so that, these are all just solutions for this, this challenge. And the other thing, the last thing I really wanted to, that I wanted to share from the findings of this report or the survey, where we didn't have any zero Hispanic response. Like, we did an English survey and a, and a Spanish survey, online and in paper, and we had zero responses for that, but we did have responses from Hispanic and Latino identifying folks in the English surveys. So it was interesting to see, like, okay, so folks are filling out the English surveys and not the Spanish ones, and that concerned me at first until I was, until learning more and understanding that public health is really good about reaching out to those communities because culturally, they live in multi, just larger family groups, they live with all their family members in these populations, so making that outreach so that they can get their testing and get time off work if they got sick or anything like that. There was big, a push, a big push from public health on that effort. Also, Maria Luisa from the Chamber of Commerce was doing chamber chatter in Spanish, and that was apparently an incredible resource for our Hispanic folks here, and it actually even pushed folks to like reach out for more resources from the chamber. So I recently talked to them, and they said, "We have to do a whole reorganization to cater to this new influx," which I thought was really neat to just like bolster that. So I'm also talking to them to see what is that, how can we help, what's, you know, what, how can we support their efforts in that way? So I thought that was really, you know, that's a challenge, but there's also been some really good things to come out of that that I did want to share. And the last, the last thing I do want to share, and I'm begging for your time, is just the strengths and the helpful information for you guys. That's, I wanted to initially lead with this, but then I thought, you know, just jump in, get everything out, and then share this. So 78% of respondents didn't have any trouble receiving care or prescriptions. I conducted stakeholder interviews with many county residents, so that was, you know, sheriffs and ranchers and Lake Health District employees, like everyone. And I had heard that the telehealth program was incredible and was really effective with really great results. Also, mainly, mainly ways people received their news were online TV and radio. This is something I want to share because this could be a really good angle to disperse critical information quickly. So if you, and also the second point with AlertSense, so maybe it's that collaboration, that, that could be something to look forward to in the future, like when we need to have those, you know, mass information get out really quickly, that could be a source, because we do have it for weather and fires, and that's been a really great resource for the community, I have, I know that, and so that could be something to look at. And then future inquiry, what are the websites, stations people are sticking to, just to understand that better as well. And then lastly, this is just to share, like, where our risk at, risk is at as a community, and basically just the, you know, using these solutions to, you know, understand our, like, our population. So 50% respondents having themselves, indicating themselves or someone they know has high risk. That's just good to know for just how we need to take care of our community and what, you know, if we're going to, if the county goes forward with making recommendations, it's understanding, like, okay, well, maybe we can't do it this way, we should be safer in this way, or just complementing that. But that's all I really wanted to share with you all today. Thank you so much for just taking all the time to listen. I, you know, just to reiterate, like, this is just like, I've, I've had a really great year, like, learning from everyone, and I am here not to impose or put any pressure on anything, like, that's not anything, so I, you know, the solution's to explore, that's what I'll share, is really just something for you guys to marinate on, and if you guys have any questions or comments or anything that I am here until the end of the month, then I will hopefully be working with the county more in the future, and I really look forward to that. So thank you again for your time.
No, thank you so much, Clara. It's been really a pleasure getting to know you. Commissioner Schillingberger, I don't want to forget you being on the phone. Do you have anything you want to add, any questions? I'm doing. Yeah. They might, might have a hard time getting on mute. We're not hearing anything. You might be on mute. You might have had to step away too for the fire. But no, really appreciate you being here today, and thank you. It's been, it's really informative, and it's a good update on some of the things that you guys have been kind of finding and discovering about Lake County.
Yeah, I know this is a hard topic, sorry, like, for everyone, so I, I just want to come from that angle. Like, I understand, like, we're done, and so this is like the last of like, okay, you guys go, like, this is just what our friends and neighbors and community members, like, have shared with us, and that's been a real privilege, so.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
You bet. So moving on, our next timed item is at 9:30. We can move down to some of our other topics.
You can come on in.
You can come in. You're more than welcome. Our first item, Jake Greer, Lake County Juvenile Service and Oregon Youth Authority. Morning, Jake.
Morning, Commissioner. Before you is, with an agreement, it is our, some juvenile prevention dollars that we get from the Oregon Youth Authority. And I started in 2012, all those dollars were geared towards helping offset our detention costs, county detention costs, and that's essentially what we continue to utilize those dollars for today. It, it's not a lot, and the numbers, there's a pot of money, and they get the numbers from, remember, if you have between 12 and 17 years of age. So I believe the number is 18,700 and some change. That's spread out over two years, so we get, I believe it's $9,1975 a quarter that comes to the county general fund, and essentially that helps offset our detention cost. So we continue to do that. So we do have a little revenue cut for offsetting the detention costs that we have, and that's dedicated money that comes in every quarter. There's some paperwork I submit, if the three boys send back, and then the rest are charged for, for that.
Are there any questions or? No, the full fiscal impact was 15,800 and some, but is that, you were saying, it was about 15,800, is what the actual full fiscal was? Because you, you said something about?
It's over two years.
It's over two years.
It's a viñate.
Okay.
The viñate, that money comes from the state, so we dedicate that 15,000, I thought it was 18,000, that's another pot of money, I'm sorry. That 15,000 comes in over two years, so it's about 78,000.
Yeah, the 1975 is per quarter for the viñate. Okay, gotcha. Sounds good. We'll act on that tomorrow. Okay. Sounds good. Thank you, Jake. You bet. So a little bit of time. The greater transmission repairs, this is from Kevin Hawk. I don't think Kevin's gonna be able to join us today, but we're looking at repairing two of our graders. The 105 and the 27, it's the, it's gonna be around 21,000, 22,000 for each. Did you guys have any questions? No questions? It's pretty straightforward. The bids have been submitted, we would be approving these under Rule 8, I think it's Rule 8. And we'll do it tomorrow. I'll verify, make sure that that's the right, yeah, single source. Because it's all CAP, so they're the only ones that'll repair it, and CAP don't fit against each other. All righty, real quick, we'll run down to... Let's jump onto the museum, Oregon Cultural Trust Committee application. Kevin Winer?
Yep. If you have any questions.
Good to see you here today. So we have an application here for the museum board and the Oregon Cultural Trust Committee. Kevin Winer has submitted his application, a really nice layer of requests. Any questions on that?
I like your email.
That was a compliment, that's the only one you get out of, so.
I gotta limit my compliments to one, one for Kevin.
Okay, all right. Okay, we can act on that tomorrow, but I'm good with that.
Yeah.
Thank you, Kevin.
I just was here if you had any, I also take the truth, but.
Oh, yeah, no, no, I really appreciate you wanting to serve on both those committees. It'll be, you could have a good voice. So, real quick on, let's see, maybe I'll just move down. Do the public health. The equity plan? It's for action consideration data, but we can always move it to tomorrow if we need to.
If you'd like it yesterday or today, please.
Really? Yesterday or today? Oh, wow.
I couldn't get all the signatures yesterday.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept the Lake County Public Health Equity Plan.
All right, I'll second that motion. Do we have any further discussion?
I know Judy did a lot of work on this, so.
Yeah. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, what? Did you have a question?
I didn't get a second.
Oh, I, I seconded.
You seconded, thanks.
Yeah.
Aye.
All right. Motion carried. Oh, there you are, Mary. We thought maybe we lost you. So three ayes. All right. Let's run down to, I have two copies of Oregon's 52. Did we? Do we have any discussion on this? Did, did we, we didn't need a hearing or anything, or we just?
Scheduled for tomorrow.
Scheduled for tomorrow, okay.
Do you guys have any questions? The state updated their CDO charges.
Okay.
They're what charges?
Concealed handgun license.
Yeah, that's last.
CDOs, concealed.
CHL.
Yeah.
CHL.
Yeah, sorry.
That's what I was thinking, CDOs.
What does a sheriff have to do with CDOs?
Yeah, I have, I have no questions on this. We'll just go ahead and have a hearing on this tomorrow. And we have to have two opinions on that? We'll have the first one tomorrow?
Commissioner?
Yes, sir.
What, what opinion says that, because it's not listed on the?
Oregon's 52.120.
Which is?
It's on, it's civil fee information, Sheriff Fee Scheduling, Garnishment, it's the, they've got a bunch of different fees in here, but it's basically that the state updated the costs and their fees for CHLs, not CDOs. So, just for Commissioner Albersen. Good to be piling, good seeing you here. I didn't even see you come in, man, you were just a ghost. Yeah. Yeah, we might want to call the rest of the guys in, actually, because we're spot on. Can we? I have no questions on the OHA Green Orders. Unless you did, you're sure I was. Mary? You want to jump in at any point, Commissioner Schillingberger?
I see a hole.
Do you want me to jump in for the, Jake?
I just, if you want to jump in at any point, feel free to just cut us off without you being in the, I can't speak in body language or anything, or when you, when you have any question or anything, so just jump on in.
Morning, everybody, thank you for being here. Today, I wanted to recognize four deputies and two troopers regarding an incident that occurred January 1st of this year near Valley Falls, where a suspect robbed a store and ultimately produced a firearm and was shot. The first thing I'd like to do, though, is just recognize the wives of these deputies and troopers, so if you are here, would you please stand? The first thing I'd like to do, though, is just recognize the wives of these deputies and troopers, so if you are here, would you please stand? I, I just simply wanna say thank you to all that you do, the hardships that you put up with, the psychological effects that you go through after an incident like this. The ups and downs. You guys see the tears, you see the stress that nobody else sees, you deal with it every day, and I just simply wanna say thank you, so. So, if I could have the deputies, Deputy Magazzini, Deputy Stubbs, Deputy Patterson, Under Sheriff Hallowell, Sergeant Hill, and Trooper Pylon. Come up here, I appreciate you. I wrote down some notice on a camp line. Are you kidding me? Okay, this is the deal, Patterson, you be quiet, if I make a mistake, leave it alone. So, as you all are aware, January first of this year, there was an individual that was up at Silver Lake. They robbed a store, they, the suspect went in there with the AK forty-seven, told the clerk that cooperate with me, give me the money, or I will splatter your brains all over the wall. The suspect fled in a silver vehicle. The deputies, there was two deputies on duty, and then Under Sheriff Hallowell received the call from dispatch. He rallied the troops. Four of these six officers were off duty at the time this incident occurred, so they rallied up, they put a plan together. They responded to the area of the Chuak, Chuak Kan River and deployed spike strips. For those of you who don't know what spike strips are, it's an accordion-looking thing that have spikes on them like that. The intent of these things are to flatten the tires, disable the vehicle, take the suspect in custody. So, they deployed the spike strips at the Chuak Kan River. The suspect ultimately came through, he hit the spike strips and his tires were flattened. He continued to travel southbound where he started throwing tread in his tires off the rims of the vehicle and continued on, on his rims. At that time Deputy Patterson, he decided to deploy his vehicle, made contact with the suspect vehicle and push it off the road by disabling it where it could no longer travel any further. The other officers and, or deputies and the troopers set up behind the vehicle. The suspect entered and exited the vehicle multiple times, there was negotiations going on between officers and the bad guy. The bad guy came out with a firearm and was shot. So, after the incident, it took seven months for DOJ to, to investigate it. It took a day and a half for the grand jury to decide that they were exonerated. I am personally proud, honored, and overwhelmed with the personnel that we have here, because they said, not today. It's not gonna happen on my watch. I am not going to let this guy harm a single person in our community, and that's what they did. They made a decision, they were decisive, they acted professionally, they acted reasonably, and their restraint was impeccable. They acted within the authority of their position granted in the Oregon, Oregon State as far as the use of force. And I am proud and honored to call them colleagues and friends. So, with that, I would like to present each of them with an award of merit for their conduct relating to this incident. So, thank you, ladies. Deputy Patterson.
So Sheriff?
Yes, sir.
I realize this is a very serious deal, but does that stop us from heckling these guys at all? Can we heckle?
Can you what?
Can we heckle Deputy Patterson?
Well, I had to address him at the very beginning here, yes. We can heckle him.
Oh, oh.
Just be careful. Flips down there now. Lake County Sheriff's Office, meritorious conduct, January one, two thousand twenty-one, Deputy Mike Patterson, his call sign is seven oh two. Under Sheriff Paul Hallowell. Congratulations. Basically says the same thing, Lake County Sheriff's Office, meritorious conduct, January one, two thousand twenty-one, Under Sheriff Paul Hallowell, seven oh two. Deputy Buck Magazzini. Congratulations Buck, job well done. Deputy Justin Stubbs. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Sergeant Scott Hill. Congratulations. I think that flips down. And Trooper Brendan Pylon. Congratulations. Well, I didn't, I didn't know if it's senior trooper.
I always know.
Let's get in there. So, I, I would just like to reiterate, we're, we're not celebrating the death of an individual, and I wanna make that very clear. The, the loss of any life is tragic under any circumstances. We are simply recognizing the conduct and the professionalism of these officers. And again, I would like to say personally, I am extremely proud and honored to work with each and every one of them. And to the families, thank you very much for coming, my appreciation, thank you.
Ready? One, two, three, one more, just in case someone blinks.
Barry, are you still with us?
It's going to begin out of service.
Yeah, I still got you.
Okay.
But I might need to sit here a little bit.
Okay, well, we'll try and jump on here. Alright, so we'll bring the meeting back into session. Next up is, we wanna do some appreciation certificates. So, Dave Berman, would you like to come up and share a few words? I know you had a big speech prepared.
Oh, no, you don't mean. Alright, as you guys know, I have a human maintenance crew that works around here, so they're okay. I mean, they do what they can for their disabilities that they have. No, I'm just joking. Anyway, as you guys know, you guys have brought the cal in the last couple of years with everything's been going on through COVID and all that, cause I'm not a very good talker, so bear with me here, but we, COVID started about two years ago, year and a half ago. Well, my guys, I feel they stepped up to a level that they didn't have to step up to, they just, they wouldn't. When COVID started, all the turmoil started, and then, you know, departments needed special things to function and, and to be able to operate through this COVID thing. They stepped up for them and made it where they could be, do their business, daily business, if that's not the shields or tape on the floor, the, just stuff that they needed to be able to function, so. And then, they were doing all that, plus their jobs, plus the facilities that I have, or we have as a county from airport, road department, towers, land, and then we, okay, then they were doing that. Then we took over the landfill and they stepped up to help me with that when I needed them to, as far as maintenance needs, because I didn't have the, the tools to do it, but I used those guys and they, they were willing to step up. Anytime I asked them to, they'd go out of their way, make sure that we got that up and running, every time, you know, they're, as long as they could, they put it in their schedule to get out there to do it. Then we took over the fairgrounds, they were willing to do that, they stepped up, and I know it's only been a short time, but from what they've already done in the last four months since I took that over is they've done a great job. I mean, Jeremy just put the sewer line in Sutton that they've been working on for ten years, and Jeremy steps up, goes down there, gets it done, you know, in a few days, and then, so. And that, that just goes to show you what kind of people, what kind of crew they are, they're just willing to get it done, and they stepped up very quickly. So, on that note, I'd like to give you guys a certificate of appreciation, so you know that we do appreciate what you guys are doing and about, so. Jeremy? Your shirt?
Thank you.
Ready? And then on the back of these, we have a little bit of a gift certificate, so. Thank you for your dedication by the count. I'll give it to you guys, if you have any kind words to say or not, they can take criticism to you.
Well, I got kind words for Jeremy. These guys, they truly have stepped up, and they know I love them, they're always there for me whenever we need something. Whether it's on their time or not, they're there to help us. I was gonna get, just get a certificate of depreciation, but I couldn't find one, so. These guys are awesome, and when Dave brought this forward, I, I was more than happy to get to help them get the ball rolling. They've helped us with the fairgrounds more than the community knows, they'll know more here come fair time. I wanna thank Melanie for giving the certificates for us, the cards for them and everything, and I just, I love you guys, but after today, I probably won't show any more.
I think we've lost Commissioner Shulenberger to some rough topography on the road, but I really wanna say thank you, you guys, you guys have been absolutely awesome. Didn't know either of you until I came to work here, gotten to know you better, and I just really appreciate getting to know you, not only as coworkers and people that I get to see every day, but as friends. And it's, you guys repeatedly and consistently stepped up to the plate to handle a lot of very unique situations on a regular basis. So, and I just wanna say it doesn't go unnoticed, we really appreciate you guys, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Dan, would you like to say anything?
I do. Um, I think in today's society, where it's really easy and quick for people to say, that's not my job, these guys have never, ever said that, and they never act that way. And I think it sets a nice example in our county, I just think they're willing to step in and help out wherever, and it's been great.
They may not have said it to you, but I know business is-
Oh, Jeremy tells you, that's not, that's not my job. It won't happen.
Well, I've never heard that shit.
And what happens is so good stuff.
They don't say it to you, because they like you guys.
He says it to me all the time, but then he turns around and goes-
And then he goes, you know, I, I have a lot more respect for someone that says, that gives you a little bit of cred and says they're not gonna do it, but then they go do it? As opposed to the people who say they're gonna do something and then don't do it?
Yes.
He boggles under his breath the whole way down the hall.
But again, thank you, guys.
No.
It's not an unnoticed by all of us.
So, was that said, you guys get a paycheck coming up? Did you get your paycheck?
There were two weeks ago.
You get your paycheck, you get your paycheck.
Um, I guess.
Do we get, do we get to go back to work today too?
No.
Oh.
Alright, you guys.
Alright.
Well, thanks.
Thank you.
We'll let you get out of here.
Are we dismissed?
Yeah, you're dismissed, if you want.
You can go now. We got work to do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, guys.
So, we'll go down to public alert and warning, SOP.
Association of Retired.
Standing standard operating procedures.
I have not yet. That's a ten thirty.
I honestly haven't had a chance to review this thing in full, so.
I only thank you for all your work on this, I know it's been an excellent job.
Do you guys want an overview real quick, is that okay?
Yep.
Sure, absolutely.
Uh, so, this is one of the three things that we need for our free OR Alert program that the state is funding. Uh, we are not, they're using Everbridge, it's a platform that we couldn't afford, so we're in the process of converting. We have our FEMA paperwork in, and these, this IGA and public alert SOP are the final two, two wheels. They let me fast track some stuff, uh, so we could start using it for the bootleg fire, which was very helpful. They've been great partners. This is a boilerplate agreement from the state that people are using, and we built it. The SOP, the only name that changed is the name. I think one of these has a walkie cover page that in one of, Ray ran a bunch of them, but they were, the official ones cleaned up, um.
So, is there an agreement in this as well, or this is just SOP?
That's the second part. There's an SOP and an IGA. So, this is just saying that, SOP is saying that we understand that this is how you use the alerting software, and these are the different things to use for the different stuff. Someone without WEA certification, certification won't be sending to WEA, they won't be misusing WEA PIN. And this is our protocol for Lake County.
Yeah.
When I inserted that, they did, we don't want people going rogue, and so. And then the second part for the IGA, uh, is just saying, this is how we're gonna use this, we agree by your terms, we won't misuse the software.
And it's a no cost to the county?
As long as the legislator, legislature keeps spending it, and it sounds like it will be, I talked to them last week, I think about how beneficial it was to Lake County, and how appreciative they are. So, I hope they keep, sounds like they will.
Did you have, because you were working with it quite a lot, did you have a lot of issues with it that you feel like maybe there's some room for improvement, or is it?
No.
Or is it just user friendliness, what do you feel about?
No.
Okay.
I like it better than the other one, I mean, the other one's perfectly fine, but this one's getting past it.
Okay.
We are very grateful.
I know there was a lot of discussion around character limitations and different things like that.
Mm-hmm.
And I imagine a lot of those things will be fixed as they go through time, just improving.
No.
So, they wanna keep the character limitations on the system?
Yes. So, that, that one have to go through the FCC, and so, it's probably why you guys wanna know, but so, in any period- it's probably why you guys want to know, but so in any period, character WEA is the maximum because of how it's transmitted and how the different, it has to be transmitted the same to all phones and not everyone has a smartphone right now.
Okay.
So the FCC says it has to be and so FEMA is like, yes, we will do this. So this is out of anyone's hands right now. Unless there are major strides in technology and we don't have flip phones anymore.
Right.
So I don't know if anyone's going to be able to say, well, you guys can have flip phones.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
So it has to be standard.
Is there um so is there an IGA attached to this? Because I I don't see it on the
So should be two documents in your package?
Look, they're both cold. Next off, okay, gotcha.
And after you guys send this, Lake County will be officially live. Even though they made some exceptions for us.
Because of the emergency.
OEMs being great to us.
Um, it's been reviewed by legal health coordinator.
Absolutely.
Sounds good. Um, yeah, we can act on that tomorrow. All right. Um, did you have a department update on transportation?
Mm-hmm. Do you want to finish other business?
Did I not?
We need to do the OHA agreement.
Oh, I briefly kind of stated to Commissioner Ellison that I didn't have any thoughts on the OHA agreement.
Oh, I apologize.
Oh, no worries. But yeah, I had no, no questions on that.
So yes, I do have an um, a department update. Uh, we have to do procurement training for ODA at yearly and um they've changed the thresholds. So I was gonna start drafting a new policy, but I thought, well, maybe I should talk to you guys before I put all the work into it. So for an RFP, our threshold for the county right now is seventy five thousand dollars. The federal and state standards are going to two hundred fifty thousand dollars for a RAA threshold. Um, so I was wondering if you guys wanted to change that in our policy um to reflect. I mean, there's no reason why you guys can't be more strict, but sometimes it would be nice to have the flexibility of not going out for an RFP and just doing the three written quotes for those projects or purchases. Um, because you know, an RFP can take two months at best to go through. So I thought I'd ask you guys if you wanted to have a pursue updating policy and putting all the work into it before I jump in. Anne thinks it'd be great. Um, she, we also discussed changing the threshold for um, for micro purchases in our policy. Cause right now it's at five thousand dollars and now the new micro purchase limit is ten thousand dollars. So you know, if you guys want to update that or not.
I thought we did update that. We never.
You have not updated the policy yet.
Okay, we haven't updated policy, but that did change legislatively. So the word technically we can do that at ten thousand for local governments. Okay.
My feeling is yes, go ahead and.
Yeah.
Because we want to be the same.
You guys can be more strict, but it just makes things easier for us if we can have the same standard across the board and not have to wonder which way this goes. Uh, and then I bought a bus, well, we bought a bus earlier this year, but it showed up last week on Friday. So that's fine.
What was seniors doing? And that's one of the smaller ones. How many seats?
It has twelve standard seats and two eighty seats.
Does that require a CBL or anything?
No.
No, it's the smaller size. Okay. I have nothing else. So our next item is ARPA discussion at ten thirty. Uh, I know some of the folks are inbound. Um, who all do we have um coming for this and who's all on that? Who's gonna be here for that discussion? Do you? We have isn't town like you going to be here or?
Um, I invited Clayton Sharp, Kevin Hawk, and Crum Ryan. Um and the city of Paisley, our representative here.
Okay.
Um.
Invited the super town like you.
Yeah, I just reminded Michelle.
Okay. Well, I don't know if you guys had sent her an invite or not.
I don't know if we, if we even discussed it.
I just invited the people you guys discussed.
Right. I I I told Michelle that she was more welcome to join us. Um, it's a public meeting, so you know. I appreciate any involvement the town wants to have some of the discussions, so. I just couldn't remember who we had all talked about having. Um, okay. Well, with that, we will adjourn the meeting until ten thirty and is Commissioner Shulenberger inbound? I just know how much he loves me. How are you guys doing?
Good.
Good.
Missing our meetings out in Palatia, you know?
Yeah. I'm not.
I gotta, I need to go and get our truck.
Yeah. All right. So we'll go ahead and reconvene, uh, come back into session. It is uh ten thirty three. Um Andy, you want to start us off on our ARPA um discussion? Um kind of where, what money we're actually dealing with then?
Sure. Um as everyone knows, on March eleventh, twenty twenty one, the American Rescue Plan Act was signed into law that established coronavirus state fiscal recovery fund and coronavirus local fiscal recovery funds for cities and counties. Uh, due to the size of our county, we received seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in May. They call them chaunches and will receive the second seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars next May. There are four statutory eligible uses for these dollars. The first one is to respond to the COVID nineteen public health emergency or its negative economic impacts. Which the negative economic impact can be for households, businesses. You know, that's broad. Also responding to the public health emergency is broad. Just have to have that COVID nineteen negative impact. The second eligible use is to respond to workers performing essential work during the emergency by providing premium pay or by providing grants to eligible employers that performed essential work during the pandemic. The third statutory eligible use is for the provision of government services to the extent of the reduction in revenue to the recipient due to the public health emergency. You have to actually look at the most recent full fiscal year and compare it to the year during the emergency. The fourth statutory eligible use is to make necessary investments in water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure. And that's it for infrastructure investment. So we asked some questions about trans- other transportation systems and it's no. Okay, so it's only water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure. We have until twenty, okay. Obligations have to be incurred by December thirty first, twenty twenty four. So as long as we commit to using those dollars by twenty twenty four, we are, we're still, we have those dollars available to us. They must be expended by December thirty first, twenty twenty six. So we have significant time. I feel like for us, that's why we, we are taking our time in deciding how to spend these dollars. It's tough to see that you know, this pot of money would be available to us in this size. You know, it might be as we move on through this pandemic, but that's uncertain. So I think the more time and information and thought we put in to spending these dollars, the better will be for all of Lake County. So far, um we have used a small chunk for the HEPA filters. We chose to say that those help our um our vulnerable populations in cleaning the air in their homes to rid their air of the virus shouldn't be in their homes. So we use some of our money for the first, um, for the HEPA filter that we handed out last week and we'll hand out again soon. So. The airport, we had some dollars that um talked about using these dollars, but also the airport had some COVID nineteen. I think I'm gonna use that, their money for the airport project that we looked at. Okay?
What was that, that they received?
They got thirteen thousand in a second, second round of an old CARES Act funding. They got, they got an additional funding pot through FA. So I think we're, and and I have to, I have to report um by August thirty first for the first quarter of funding through June thirtieth. And then I will report annually after that point in time. And I, and and the template requires me to show the funding in those four uses and to describe it. So that their goal is that you know, these, that it's transparent and it's accountable to the public for these significant dollars that government's spending. So I wish it were more, I mean, I
Yeah.
I I wish it were and again, we can help, we can help households and businesses with negative economic impacts. You know, um justifying that. There's been rounds of dollars available for businesses already. There's, there's business dollars in, in other pots.
Well, then we have the infrastructure dollars that would be going primarily to water, sewer and broadband.
And broadband, which we know is significant projects in Lake County that incorporate those.
Water, broadband mainly, but yeah.
So.
And how much of those dollars do we have? Was, what was the actual sum on that?
One point five million. Total. We have the first.
Spread over two years.
Yeah, we have the first seven hundred and fifty thousand in hand right now.
Do we have to spend that money before we get to May of next year?
That's not really clear in the compliance and I think the reason is, is we have until twenty twenty four to obligate it. So I I don't know how they would hold us to you know, spending it already to get the next charge if we all, if we have that timeframe to obligate it.
Right. Yeah, so I think there was some concern that if we didn't spend some of it, that they might, we might not get the next round. But if they gave us that timeframe for that first bunch, then why would they?
Yeah, that first timeline, well, yeah, it was unclear. This, this little document I'm looking at was published June twenty fourth, twenty twenty one. So they continue to update the rules on this periodically and uh, there is like, we're learning as we go on this.
I think broadband's still going to continue in water and and sewer. That's still going to be a big focus. I think uh I was talking with Wyden's office last night and one of the things that they said was um Jacob was telling me water infrastructure has proven to be in much greater need than I think anyone thought. Especially in rural communities where it's difficult to keep a lot of those systems updated and keep them in good shape. And they learned a little bit with warm springs. I think that warm springs has been issuing boil water notices for a long time. And uh, there's been a really big political push for clean drinking water in a lot of these communities. So they know that the dollars that they've put towards water infrastructure has been great and uh, I think that they've recognized the need to do it even more. So I don't think that that's going to change as far as if they update the rules. I don't think a lot of those things are going to change. Broadband continues to be a big topic of discussion too. Especially when people realize that, you know, you don't have to live in the big city to work and you can work remotely. That requires internet though. So. Um, we have Tom Paisley here. Thank you guys for joining us. I'm Carter from school. Clayton, you're representing the North End. No pressure. Um, and Michelle Perry, thank you for joining us from town.
You're welcome.
And so uh, I'm not sure why Jake's here.
I was here for the eleven forty five.
Gotcha. So I guess, you know, we kind of want to have an idea of some of the projects, you know, ahead and what some of the thoughts are. And it isn't just the infrastructure, it's some of the other dollars as well. As far as, you know, what are, is on the radar for the different portions of Lake County. It's a big county, lots of different things to consider and we just want to make sure that we as commissioners are being thoughtful and mindful of everything that is on everyone's radar and what everyone's dealing with. So it's an open discussion. Feel free to jump in at any time.
So with that, can you guys from Paisley give us kind of an overview of your city water needs and what your I realize you guys gave us this, but cheat, but what is your, like, your total cost of oh, I see it's done here. I'm very two point four million.
Yeah, that's an estimated value of the complete overhaul of what our water system would need. Um, we did currently, we do have some money coming from Salem for the generator issue that we were talking about. So um, through using SCOED, uh, Betty and Denise were able to get us fifty thousand towards some generators. So in case we ever have to shut down again, uh, we won't have to use gravity fed feed off of our system. We can actually use backup generators to apply that. Um, big reason, our fire hydrants are declining and when we have to go to gravity feed, we can't build trucks, we can't tap into them and stuff for any fire purposes. Is one big reason for the generator backup. And also because of gravity feed, once one consumer uses the water, then it drains from somebody else depending on where they have centrally located. Just like I said, our pipes are declining. Um, most of those pipes were laid in nineteen seventy two through seventy six. So we have pipes that are needing replaced. Uh, Travis wasn't able to be here with us today. Um, we do have a partial estimate that we have leaky pipes somewhere because we are actually losing thousands and thousands of gallons of water every month. And trying to locate these pipes and figure out where these pipes are leaking is one thing that we have to figure out too. But being, are they running under fields when they field irrigate? It's, it's going to be a, a process for us to figure out where it's at, but we do realize we are losing tens of thousands of gallons every month just off old pipes that are deteriorating. It's one of our biggest things. Um big thing is just Big thing is just, you know, quality water. I mean, we saw our water tested. We've come from a hiccup in the the years past and have improved with that, but it's just keeping up with it. I didn't realize one, you know, drilling for a new aquifer. We do have one aquifer that we have to flip a coin. Is it, what's it doing for us? So we got the three pumps up there. If that one aquifer does in the next four or five years, what we think it's going to do, then we're going to be reduced in water there too.
Is it the quality of the water or is it recharge rate issue? What is it?
It's it's mainly recharge. We actually see a fluctuation in what the pump is pumping to what it was pumping. The water's just not, sometimes it's high pump volume and sometimes it's low pump volume. That's actually on one of our newer pumps. So.
That would be nice to find out.
I wasn't very.
I know, I shouldn't laugh at that, but.
You're a little too loud on facts. I'd like to have to treat you to that, does that sound?
Gotcha.
There we go. So we don't do so much chemicals to.
Yeah.
So that that is one thing that that the city of Paisley is actually, you know, our biggest concerning need right now is just starting somewhat of working to get that water system backed up for the residents. So we don't have to worry about what's happened in the past, what, you know, we're having to do. So.
Good job. Good job. And you said you worried we'd get a grant through SCOED with Betty Riley for the Jitakka generator?
Yes, so we got the fifty thousand because once the the mayor learned how to write something up properly and use the correct terminology. That we were she, I mean, it was within an hour and a half that I got a phone call from Salem that they were sending us fifty thousand for. It was something that was already for us that we had never asked for after the Bratton fire. Uh, it was part of a safety type grant that was available to rural communities that are affected by fires and stuff that we didn't know about. And I finally used the right words and found it. And then so we got fifty thousand to utilize toward generators. And we have an additional fifty thousand through SCOED that is sitting if we have to use it again. So if we don't have to touch it, then it can be rerouted to another rural community. But there is the ability to take another fifty that SCOED knows how to implement and get for us.
So has that generator been put online yet?
So right now we're still looking at price on generators, uh, working with bids for getting them in. Uh, I've been reaching out to a company up in Portland that deals with Cummins and Cooler generators. They have generators that would meet our needs or even more than what we need now. It's just trying to find out. They'll deliver, which was nice. It's just finding something now to hook them up properly to the wells without going over our amount that we have right now. So they have not been ordered, but they are. They're they're ready for us to put the orders in. And right now the company out of Portland has the best deals and best warranties for these generators.
So did you guys receive as a city in the ARPA money?
Yeah, we will. Um, I think ours is like fifty two thousand and change or something. So twenty six, the first, the first caveat led twenty six.
Yeah, over two years. So you got you received your first twenty six?
We have not received yet. Sorry. No, I just they had a pass fill out the paperwork to send it in, but we haven't received anything yet. Still in the year.
So what is your guys' plan for that twenty six thousand?
That was under discussion today for our city council meeting is how we are going to utilize it with what we're able to utilize it for. The fifty thousand, yes, that we are getting from SCOED is definitely a big help because generators are not cheap the size we need. If we're having to, and hopefully that would work into it, we could actually use into the ARPA money to help pay for the installation of them. That's one of the big things is the way all three of our wells are set up. We can't put a large three phase on it like we were hoping to. We actually have to do single phase to each uh well. Because if we could just do one big one to a three phase, would have been a heck of a lot easier, but we're having to look at three different generators right now, two generators with all controls and safeties. We're looking at thirty eight thousand for those two. And then just getting somebody that could be able to bend on to come in and be able to hook us up that's not going to kill us. So we would be able to tap in a little bit to the ARPA uh if we have to pay for that.
So you have multiple generators then, or do you just use use one?
So right now we don't have any generators. Uh, so when our power goes down, it's gravity feed only.
Okay.
Right now, the company in Portland has two generators in their yard that they said a phone call could get us to get them for us.
And would that would just gravity feed, none of your hydrants or anything?
So no, that actually would give us enough power to resupply to two of our wells and be able to put power back into the pumps, the pump for the fire hydrants. We would just be down our smaller well that would be more like community side.
So I know Christmas Valley is dealing with very similar issues with their water system. They're looking at fifteen million for theirs though to react.
Correct. Correctly, just I'm not out there very much, so I don't know, but I they're cobbling it together every day.
Yep. I was talking to Perry yesterday. And they they, I guess their board did make the decision to go out for another loan of about two point something, right? That's loans are always difficult because it puts you into a financial crunch. You have to pay that back. And they had already gone out for a loan prior. And they need to start working your major system. Right now they're using utilizing a flat rate and they really need to start going over to meters because it's just they're having the same issues, broken pipes that they can't find, they're losing huge amounts of their water constantly. And uh they need a generator as well, so they've been, I think they're going to be reaching out to SCOED for uh the same dollars that you guys got. Because when the power went out, you were in a flood flood fire and uh they had the big fire up in La Pine as well. So they shut the power down to the entire north end of the county. And when they do that, put the leaks aside to the system. Everyone's running to go and get water because power's out when they're trying to fill up jugs and everything else. So they didn't have much left to pay by the time they and and when and because.
And you gotta recharge the system.
They gotta recharge the system, you gotta build it back up during a fire with none of their hydrants that you lost. So for the fire trucks or anything else in the middle of all this heat. Fortunately, the power did come back on, but just even during that short window, it's pretty impactful. So they've got they've got a long road ahead of them. You know, even, you know, with all the the one point five million that we got, it's peanuts compared to what they need to rebuild in their system. But um and like we had a discussion with the Senator's office last night is that I think, you know, for some of these projects, it's going to have to be phased in chunks. You know, especially for Christmas Valley, their money's not all going to come in in one pot. So they're gonna have to you know, do what they can. We can't do all the work at once anyway, so just have to keep at it. But we're trying to identify the greatest needs that we have on the table right now.
And they want some we can actually.
Correct. Get the biggest bang for the buck.
So Michelle, the town lead fee is going to receive fifteen million for their water project. Tell they receive any of it yet?
No, that's still, um, the governor hasn't signed yet on that. And then all of that money is going to be funneled through Business Oregon. And um I imagine paperwork will start coming out October, November, we probably won't get money till the first of twenty twenty two. And so that's going all for the water treatment facility.
So all of that money is for the water treatment facility?
Correct.
It's nothing on the plumbing or it's all water treatment?
That's correct.
Is there a potential with, uh, excuse me, Commissioner Schillenberger, did you have something? I just saw that you unmuted.
Yeah, I'd like to hear from Michelle what the latest update is on the broadband project.
Um, the council met and it's, we've asked to have Greg Larson call Councilman Scott Langham with the pipe. He said he could get ahold of pipe. To my knowledge, that phone call hasn't occurred. I am, the EDA just has all their release money. So I'm putting that application in and submitting for the North Water for one point four million. And that's where that project sets.
So you're not looking for assistance from the county at this time?
That's correct.
And then Michelle, you, the town also has ARPA money with supplies with with your ARPA dollars for the town.
That I'm taking to council next week. Before, prior to the fifteen million being awarded, I was using the ARPA money for engineering plans for the water treatment facility. And um now that we've got the fifteen million, I'm not sure what council's going to want to do with that. But I earmarked all of the ARPA money and the COVID money that came to all the different cities through LOC for water. But now the the council's going to need to make a decision on what they would like to do with that moving forward.
So how much ARPA money did the town make you?
Uh, five hundred and thirteen thousand.
Mr. Carter, do you have anything that you want to add?
Uh, some of the connectivity might be something we'd like to talk about, especially with our new daycare center, you know, and some work school, you know, upgrade some of the server stuff to hit everybody. Because we're 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 actually broadcasting in New Pine Creek from Union to get that straight shot. So we could that 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 equipment's not as new as it needs to be. So that's something. And also the daycare center, we have to get it, you know, up to date for for the modern internet.
So broadband. Do you have a a cost of what do you think that's going to cost?
Not yet. We have engineer look at it, so it just depends on what kind of, you know, what we got to be the best server. It'd also be a hotspot for the community. You know, that's our plan. So people could use the park and also hit that so they could access it like they do the schools now. But I can get that to you guys soon. So sorry I haven't got that priced out yet.
No, don't worry. That's fine. So can you guys think of anything else besides like what Mr. Carter just brought up or a water project? Anything else that we might need to start paying attention to throughout the county? We really don't have anybody from Pine Creek or West Side or Warner Mountain.
Yeah, broadband down our end of the county is a huge deal, but I don't know how you would address that. Last year, if the kids not going to school, doing that online learning, there was a bunch of them that just didn't even have a chance at it because they have no internet access on our end of the county. You can hand them laptops, but nothing's going to work when they're.
Yeah, in the Christmas Valley town site and a few other places.
Yeah, and I don't I don't know what the answer is. It's such a broad area. I mean, you can take all that money and probably just not even get anything accomplished. So but it is something to look forward, look at, I guess.
So with that said, Commissioner Schillenberger, you brought up that we there's a possibility we'll be getting more broadband money throughout the state. I guess we should count that egg until we see it, but what what are your thoughts?
Well, just the the meeting that I had last week uh with Representative Dreschke and uh Clencham County Commissioner DeGru and others there. They say that more broadband money is coming. And so for ARPA discussions and whatnot, a lot of people aren't focused too much on broadband for ARPA dollars because they just feel like there is a going to be more opportunities here in the near future for broadband. So right now Oregon has what, a hundred twenty eight million for broadband? And they they feel like that number's going to increase significantly here in twenty twenty two. I guess I have a question then, and if Treasurer Ian Corine said, I don't remember, maybe I guess that there was housing, uh, one of the options?
We can help households with the negative economic impact. How, there's housing dollars available through other agencies though also.
Okay.
So it it depends, I think, on the the nature. I mean, I I mean, we've all heard that the, um, what did they call it? The eviction moratorium expired, right? So I'd have to look into what it, you know, obviously we can help households with negative economic impacts from COVID. It's pretty broad.
Yeah.
And then we want to make sure that it's again transparent, accountable, fair, equitable, all of those things. But there have been assistance programs open for quite a while for housing assistance.
Would that include uh new construction?
Well, I mean, you just you just have to make the case that the reason the new construction didn't occur earlier was to the negative, to the pandemic. was to the negative, to the pandemic, which I would say, yeah, things shut down. So, you know, we just have to think of ways to state the case.
Uh, lumber prices shot up, availability, cost of land for everything.
Yeah, so I mean.
And affordable housing proved throughout pandemic to remain a, a major issue.
Yeah.
I suppose we could try and make the case whether or not it's taken or not.
That'd be fun for the school district to partner with, uh, building a couple homes, uh, so we've done in some other places, it's really great. And then that money that they make, you know, homes, this goes on the next building class. And our kids are in a construction class now at K C C. And that would be a great opportunity for us to, down the road, if you guys are open to it, or if it's allowed down the road, it'd be something that I'd love to look into. That's a hands-on job for our kids, and it's also one of those that, that the community sees a, a product, which I think is important. So the kids, it's always something, you know, twenty years later, they come by and say, hey, we, we helped build that house.
Right.
Also teaches them the trade.
And it's a, a trade that keeps giving, it's something you can use, even if you don't make it your, you know, your income, you can make it a service for a lot of stuff. For your, your own personal home and also neighbors and community, you know, church, all kinds of stuff.
That's interesting. That is very broad, you're right.
Yeah, you just, I mean, that, there's, there's ob, obviously like a much more documentation other than this brief summary I printed.
Yeah.
And then, then, of course, it gives, you know, examples of a, a lot of ways. Everyone was negatively impacted, whether economics or responding to the health emergency. So we, you can get there, um, again, just trying to spread it out as much as possible. Okay, so.
Well, you know, and I don't wanna shoot ourselves in the foot either when we spread it out super thin. We end up getting to the point where we're really not making a dent in anything you're doing. You're spread all over the place, and so you're ineffective at everything. And, yeah, maybe, and that's why, you know.
I mean, broadband is very, very important.
Right.
People aren't gonna use broadband if they don't have water. And so.
And we know that we've got development happening, like for instance, on the north end of the county. You know, and this, the potential of the regional landfill and housing and different things. And we've got a housing development here that might do that, is wanting to put in affordable housing, veteran housing, and, you know, work on the behavioral health side as well. And we've seen our behavioral health as just been, as, uh, the issues in our community and countywide have been astronomical throughout the pandemic. Which is people that have really suffered our caseload, went through the roof. And it was bad before, but it, it was bad during and after.
There's another thing too that I thought was pretty interesting, St. Helens and Columbia County School District partnered up, and they went ahead, a lot of people were not able to get general maintenance done in their home because of COVID, and now it's hard to find workers. So they have their construction class, they're not building anything new, but what they're going around is doing repairs. So they put in for projects for three hundred dollars, five hundred dollars, up to a thousand. And then the, that crew is going in and doing that work for the people. So that might be another thing, it'd be a great benefit for the entire county for different people, you know, things that are broken that you can't, you, it's hard to get a worker right now to come into your house and repair something, you know, a sink or anything. And this could be a really great service, and also I think it would have a pretty good impact, so it might be something else I just wanted to throw out.
Yeah, I like, I like that idea of whether building a house or doing general repairs, that's through a construction class would be awesome. That was my favorite class in school, was construction. We built a ton of these storage sheds around town, and, so, most of it all right, most of them are still standing.
I like, it's a skill, it's a trade. You carry with you, carry, carry, carry with you through your life.
It is important that we know what the costs are gonna be. Because like with Paisley, I knew you guys had water problems, but until today, I didn't know exactly what you need. And so what we could do as a board of commissioners of the county is start running it up the fly pole. You know, as far as Senator Finley and all of our representatives have, have been a great help to us. Say, hey, Paisley needs this water proj, project, and this is why. Or the school district, we can help with the housing situation and teach our kids a trade at the same time. You know, those, those sort of things. And so any information that you guys can give us at any time about anything, if we don't know about it, we can't really. And so it's very important that we know what you guys need. And so, you know, just like the water project in, in Christmas Valley, until what, six or eight months ago, we didn't know.
We didn't know how bad it was, and, but I don't, I think it stuck up on them too, because they even had to go to water offices that they had had, you know, that they're having now.
So it's very important that we know, so we can help. Because even if we can't completely fund a project with our ARPA, we can possibly get it through school head or, or different sources. And just stay on top of it, until we receive enough funds to take care of the projects, so.
What about stretching some of these dollars, you know, just kind of spitballing here in terms of, okay, we've got one point five million, is there a way to stretch those dollars in terms of borrowing dollars with them? Or how, how would you, I don't know.
Might use it for whatever.
Is that because it's a grant and, and I was?
You mean, I'd use it for whatever you're working on?
Um.
I'm not even getting into whether or not you wanna do something like that, I'm just curious whether or not you could.
We do have, like, Business Oregon's been mentioned a few different times. Business Oregon has, you know, the special public works loan fund, uh, that's available to us in different amounts. We have one, um, that we'll tap here pretty soon for our railroad infrastructure project. So depending on the nature of the work we're doing, there's different avenues for either grants or loans. You know, that's a really broad question.
It is.
If, like, if, if we're doing, um, the, the housing, you know, there's, there's dollars that way. I think if we're going an education route with trade school things, there would be different funding available that way. Um, so it, it depends on the nature of the project.
So, speaking of the city of Paisley, could you guys, could you guys pay back a loan through your, your water department?
Um, yeah.
I mean, grants obviously better.
Right.
But wondering what the potential is for a loan, what kind of a loan could you afford? And in order to, you know, we don't have to match the whole thing, say, with a, a grant. But if a portion of that cost for that new system could be partially alone, we don't wanna put you in a hole where you're having to scratch your way out of for the next twenty, thirty years either, but at the same time, figuring out what you could afford with the income that you get right now. So do, do you guys have meters?
Yeah, we, we run meters.
Yeah. When was the last time you raised with a meter?
Two years ago.
Yeah.
And that's why we raised almost because.
And, but you generally kind of keep up with those, is that a fairly consistent rate increase?
I think you can only raise whenever two years or.
Yeah, right. Yeah, every two to five years usually, but.
It, it was a minimal raise, but with minimal raise that we did, when I was up in council at that time, was to help out with smaller projects that we were running into. Uh, the chemicals that are, have to be utilized for the treatment plant, the, you know, updates to the wells to keep them going, stuff like that. It wasn't enough that we could generate at that time to replace a main street worth of pipe, but it was enough to keep everything running for the community.
How much total for both projects, in the north and for Paisley?
Oh, this one's the twenty-four, so about two, two point four million, and then with that one, yeah, seventeen point four million potentially. And, I mean, in total, but like the Christmas Valley project, I think, you know, we can definitely break that out in base at this point. Um, it's just that they've already gone out for two loans, so I couldn't ask them, or they, they're going out for a second right now. So I'm wondering about, you know, really, their only option at this point beyond what they've already done is grant. And so I'm trying to figure out how to stretch some of these, uh, yes, Michelle?
So, um, the E D A just released their, uh, three billion, and part of that is projects. Um, if you, and you guys have a grant writer on staff, is that correct?
Yeah.
What I would do is I would go for, um, making this a regional project, where the T, the towns are, or the towns are coming together for a large regional water project and submit from that direction. That way you could go, um, and apply for more water or for more grant money. So the fir, there's, uh, I forget, I think it's bigger, better, best, there's seven different categories that you could apply for. The one that they're looking for is highly competitive. The first phase, you are awarded five hundred thousand dollars for the project if your, if your project is selected. The next phase, they begin at twenty-five million and they go up from there. So it seems to me that what would be great is to come up with a, a business plan or a feasibility study that these communities are in dire straits for water infrastructure, and that the project merits, uh, cooperation, um, and regional development for the water systems. And, um, su, submit for that grant, because then you could get the entire, you could get, get the seventeen or twenty million, whatever you're looking for, because they're looking for, um, cooperative, large projects. And it seems like these towns in the north part of our county fit very nicely into that criteria. Um, and then you can have, um, uh, an agreement or intergovernmental agreement that this is how the towns are gonna operate. Um, and this is how they'll, um, help one another get the water out to these communities. Um, that's just for that one opportunity. The E D A, E D A has said, don't put in for multiple, the same project in for multiple divisions. So you may wanna put it somewhere else. But there's a lot of money out there that you could put this in a project that is together, um, in the spirit of cooperation, because they're looking for that, and innovation, and bringing the technology out to these small, uh, cities. That's what I would do, um.
The only problem with that is, is the Christmas Valley is not incorporated.
It's not incorporated, but if you have a municipal water district, I mean, we are, we can really represent them as well, so.
Let's do October nineteenth for Bay One. Whatever.
It's due October twenty-one.
Bay One is.
Bay One.
Yeah. So they have time.
Yeah. And, and we're also in the middle of a survey for the North End, hopefully, with, uh, where it would be, have you heard back from Portland State University on historical September, right? They, they're gonna start that in September.
That's the.
Okay, so when, and that survey will help determine just some of the demographics of the community, and will hopefully, um, put them in an eligible position for community development block grant. And so, and, and both the water district and the library are doing it at the same time. So, you know, the libraries, the building, the library, that as well. But yeah, in cooperation, and, uh, both Senator Merkley and Lighton, Congress and Vence's office, and I think a lot of our state legislators would be more than happy to issue letters of support for a project, for a regional project. With that kind of cooperation, I don't know, might stand a chance. Get off radar, not know that this is an issue, that we don't ask. And knowing the blame but ourselves.
Erica sent us any concrete information on the total cost?
Yeah, she's, she sent us some. And Daryl Anderson has some as well. He's been helping, uh, talking to Merkley's office as well, keeping him on, making sure, you know, we're on the radar. Because I know Mr. Anderson wants to help them a lot. Commissioner Schillenberger, can you, uh, still hear us all right? I, I feel kind of down and mumbly.
No, I, I hear you just fine, Commissioner. Uh, I'm gonna have to get right in here though, if we're about out of discussion. Yeah, I gotta get down the hill, so.
Okay. Um, yeah, this is really early stages, we starting the conversation, trying to figure out what projects are on the radar. And I think it would be worth, you know, maybe you'd be reaching out to getting Sharon Lighty involved now, and maybe exploring some more options with that E D A grant, but I don't know. Go ahead.
No, I think we heard some really good discussion today, uh, some good projects, and, uh, kind of gives a better idea of all part-time numbers and whatnot. Uh, I do think we should explore what Michelle's talking about for Paisley and Christmas Valley. You know, maybe that is a good idea to combine those. Let's take a look at, let's, let's just see, you know, what, what all's involved there. And, uh, you know, we, that may help our decision-making. And then we can spread our dollars, you know, other, other ways too, uh, if that does come to fruition. But again, some of that's a little bit of a long shot, there's no guarantees, but as, uh, and saying, we don't have to commit the money right away either, so.
Okay, and so with the Bootleg Fire going in both of Clamath and Lake County, are there smaller cities in that Clamath region next to Lake County that you may even be able to do a bi-county regional water structure?
Probably, we, that's a good idea. There's Light and, and Light, Beatty, where we're.
Yeah. There you go.
Sure. Yeah.
Then you have a, a bigger cooperative effort to bring water to more than just one county. And, and you have the statistics to back it up, and it's innovative.
There's no water district or anything like that in the Sycamore Estates, is there? There's no water tower or anything like that for that community? It's been thirty years since I've been here. I mean, yeah, I, uh, I mean, probably about half that time, but I just.
And you may be able to leverage off of Clamath County's ability to help write, write the grant, and to put two powerful forces together to bring water.
Yeah, and you have Bay County.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I'll talk to Fisher DeGru, cause I have to talk to him on something else, so I'll, I'll talk to him on that.
Be great. Be great.
Yeah. Okay. Um, I really appreciate you all being here today. Yeah. So, all right. Um, we'll recess until eleven forty-five. I can't see you, uh, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you, can you hear me okay?
Oh, yeah, perfect.
Thank you so much for the invitation, I appreciate it.
So, uh, we'll just go right into, uh, the class update then. Um, we have Commissioner Schulenberger online and, uh, Commissioner Albertson, myself present.
Awesome. So I just checked, so our, one of our primary focuses, um, probably since mid-May has been the eviction prevention work. With, uh, um, the federal resources. So as of today, we've processed seventy-four payments. Uh, those are a combination of rent-to-rearages, forward rent and utility payments. Um, that can all be covered with those funds. Um, there is an incredible amount of pressure from the state and the governor's office to get that money spent. Um, and while we understand that urgency, uh, it is, it has not been easy. Um, so we would, um, I would appreciate, um, the commission's help in spreading the word, particularly in Lake County. We're not seeing a lot of applications, um, coming from Lake County. And so, um, I guess my ask is if you could, if you guys would help us spread the word around that program.
Okay.
We do have, so our allocation just for that funding source is six point two million. So this is kind of un- unprecedented, uh, resource allocation, um, combined with unprecedented pressure.
Right.
Um. Our energy assistance program is receiving seventy to a hundred applications a day. Um, they are providing a cooling program, uh, for the second year this year. Um, and so that's going pretty well. Um, the moratorium for the investor-owned utilities ended the first of this month. Um, the moratorium on disconnections. And so we're expecting to see a little more interest in that program. Our family-supported connections team, um, has been doing, well, since the pandemic, they, they moved to primarily phone support. Um, they did receive some assistance from, um, the emergency response team lead, regional lead. Um, at O D H S, um, when the bootleg fire first started, they couldn't reach some of their participants. And so the O D H S team helped track some of them down so that they would, the team at least knew that they were okay and had been evacuated. Um, the team has about fifty percent of their current participants that, um, live really remote. Um, and they were pretty worried about them. So that was kind of, um, it was, it was, uh, unexpected for O D H S to just jump right on it. Um, so that was really cool. Uh, our representative payee team continues to have issues with the Medford office. Um. There is a new supervisor over there and I understand that they are going to address the issues. Uh, right now we have seventeen pending, um, new participant applications that have been held up in the Medford office for several months. So we're hoping.
What are the, what are the issues that you guys are primarily having with Medford office?
So they, um. They set appointments with our team and then they do not show up at the appointment because everything's by phone right now. There have been months-long delays in approving new participants. And so what happens is those folks don't have access to any of their benefits while that application is pending. Um, a few months ago, we had a, a person who had been waiting since August of twenty twenty for approval. Um, and that one finally got resolved, um. Basically due to the team calling the Medford office every single week and checking status on the pending applications. Um. So it's, it's been really challenging, but we're, the team is hoping that the new supervisor is going to take care of some of that stuff. Um, the other piece of what's happening is if there is a, uh, emergency situation. And the Medford office wants to refer an individual to class to be their representative payee. Those approvals happen really quickly. And so it's like this, this connection. So if they, if they want class to be their representative payee, they process it real quick. But if class is sending them applica- applications for approval, it's really slow.
Really big way.
And super, super frustrating.
Okay. Well, that's an, that's interesting.
Yeah. Yeah, I just heard about that. I, I want to say last week that the Medford office calls and kind of expects the team to drop everything. And get all the paperwork done, you know, for the new client. And then they approve it like within the week. And then we have this other group of seventeen that have been waiting for months. So that's kind of the high level, um, what we've been working on. Um, I am working on trying to find resources. Um, to increase, uh, the number of rental units available in both counties. Um. A- as you know, housing access is an issue statewide. And all the classes primarily focused on, um, affordable housing slash lower-income, um, renters. We think that if there's more access to housing for, for those groups of folks. It'll take the pressure off of other housing, um, that can be available for workforce, um, et cetera. And so I've been kind of working on that on the side. And I think that was in, um, my update a couple of weeks ago, um, that I'm working with a developer. On identifying some multifamily properties. Um, he did identify one in Lakeview. Um, and so I wanted to ask the commission, do you. What do you think the housing needs are in Lakeview and in Lake County? Um. Yeah.
Um, well, just for myself, I think it's a, it's a mixture, um, of. Workforce housing, um, affordable housing, veteran housing. I think, uh, all those things kind of need to be tackled. I think, uh, we have a large veteran population that thinks struggles finding adequate, um, housing needs. And, uh, obviously our workforce is struggling as well. We have a lot of people that have really good jobs that pay really well and they struggle just finding a place to. To live and move in with their family. And not, not even, I, I mean, just renting, uh, let alone buying a house. So, um, I think housing all the way around is proving to be an issue, but I'm just one commissioner. I don't know if the other two have anything to add on that.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. Um, there's, there's several projects that are. Uh, kind of in the early stages still, um, that are hopefully, that hopefully might, uh, stand a chance at addressing some of these issues. But it's not something that's going to be fixed overnight. And funding is always, uh, a problem in this, you know, and I think, uh. Um, getting companies and individuals to make those investments, you know, with the housing market being as volatile as it has been in the last few years is. It's always challenging. Uh, Commissioner Schulenberger, do you have anything to add? Uh, you're, you're breaking up. You're breaking up pretty bad.
Yeah.
Uh, it's really echoey and distant. Oh. He, uh, we lost Commissioner Schulenberger, it looks like. He might call on the line. Um, oh, he's back. Are you there?
Okay. Yeah.
Uh, it's still, still really bad. Um, we're just barely catching the ends of individual words. Should, should we have him call in with, uh, phone line?
I don't know if that'd be any better.
Well, internet's sometimes just different. I don't know, I don't know.
How about now?
Uh, that's, that's a little better.
Hey, uh, Chris Williams, you're right on with what your analogy was there. Uh, I'm hearing from, uh, doctors and whatnot that we have people turning down jobs at the hospital. Uh, because they can't find housing, whether that be nurses, nurse assistants, uh, you know, any combination there. Of people that would want to work there. I know that, uh, federal agencies have a hard time, uh, recruiting because of housing. Uh, you know, we either have really low-end housing or super expensive housing. So, uh, I think all the businesses could be doing more if we had better housing, so, just wanted to say that.
No, thank you. Yeah.
That's helpful, thank you. Yeah, so I'll continue to, um, look for resources. Um, my primary interest or my primary focus, um, around housing access is rehab instead of building new. The, the building is way too expensive. Um, and I think rehabbing may be a good interim solution to just ease some of the pressure. Um. In my, uh, weekly updates, I, you know, we, we constantly have two hundred applicants on our list looking for housing. It does not really go down. Um, as soon as we, um, assist somebody with movement assistance, somebody else, um, is, is on the list. So we've, we've been hovering around two hundred for, I'm going to say six to nine months, um, pretty consistently.
Okay.
Um, on the veterans piece, we did recently, um, the supportive services for veterans' families. Um, is now part of our, the class team again. Um, so I will, um, reach out to that team and see how engaged they have been with Lake County.
Okay.
Is there anything in particular that, um, the commissioners would want an, an update on?
Um, where are you with, I know you lost the one physician, uh, individual who's working here. Um, in Lakeview, uh, um, are you looking at replacing that position or?
Oh, yes, we did replace that, that position.
Oh, okay, I hadn't heard, so.
Okay, I apologize for that.
Me.
Um, yeah, we, he's been on board, I'm going to say sixty to ninety days.
Oh, wow, okay, so I must have missed that update and I didn't see it.
Yeah, hi- his name is Marty. And so he, um, he is working, um, out of the office space that we rented at the senior center.
Oh, excellent.
Um, and he'll be, um. Starting to do some, some outreach events. And so we're, um, we're try- we're trying to figure out the best way to do that essentially.
Okay.
But he's, he's been participating at the U C N meetings and attending those and starting to make those connections.
Oh, good, good.
Yeah, we, um, we made a decision to do, because it's, that's a tough position, they're, they're kind of by themselves. Um, quite a bit, and so we did the bulk of the training, um, in Clamath Falls. And then, um, had a couple of office team leads kind of do onsite training, uh, in Lakeview with them for a few weeks.
Alrighty. Anything else on the update or things you want to make sure that we're aware of or?
Probably ju- I mean, I'll, I'll just repeat it, so the, um, the work around the eviction prevention.
Right.
Um, we're going to be. Doing some, um, paid ads like on Hulu and, and trying to reach folks that don't necessarily know that class exists or what we do. Um, and that will also be, um, targeted in Lake County. Uh, we're hoping to get that put together in probably the next ten days or so.
Okay.
Um, where it'll, where it'll be, uh, more online ads. Um, and then we'll be, we'll be evaluating the effectiveness of that. We haven't really done that sort of a campaign before. Um, so we'll be evaluating how effective that is and, and, um, reaching a wider audience that doesn't necessarily know who we are. And I would, I would just also add if, um. The commissioners or Melanie have any questions of, you know, what class is doing, et cetera, just reach out to me.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, no, it's been great having you over there, Christina, and I really appreciate. Uh, your work and the update emails that you send us are always good to have. Um, even if we don't respond, um, it's just good info to be able to review and see. Uh, we also have, uh, Danielle Jester from, uh, the examiner here today and she's taking notes on some of this. So it's a good resource to utilize for getting some of that information out there to the public. Because I, I know a lot of the community do watch these videos, um, that are posted on YouTube. And, uh, so it'd be a good resource to utilize in terms of being out in the community and in terms of what class is doing. Some of those other dollars that you guys have available to you right now for some of these projects.
Thank you, I really appreciate that. And I know that sometimes the weekly updates are really dense. I'll apologize in advance. Sometimes it's a little long-winded, but I just really want to make sure that, um. The, the community members that receive those, that they know exactly what's going on with class. Um, I think that's really important, um, particularly in Lake County, uh, because we haven't always, um, put our best foot forward there.
Well, I, I just want to say from me, myself personally, when, when I first came on in two thousand nineteen, January, I didn't know what class was. And, uh, I had no communication, uh, with anyone in class for a while and, uh. Until you kind of came on board and I got to meet some of the folks over there, um. I don't think we were getting the communication. I don't think we were getting the communication that we're getting now, so.
I appreciate that, thank you. And I appreciate the invitation to provide a verbal update to you today. I, I wish I could have been there in person, but I had a network meeting in Newport, so. I couldn't, I couldn't telecourt to Newport from Lakeview.
I was, I was just in Newport, just, just the weekend, yeah.
Oh, that's awesome.
It was nice weather, it was extremely cold, but it was, it was pleasant, so.
Yeah, the temperature difference is shocking.
Yeah, you go from ninety-some-odd degrees here to fifty degrees in the middle of the day on the coast. So, you're not acclimated, so, anyway.
Not, not at all.
Well, I appreciate the update. So, is there anything else from you guys? All right.
Thank you very much for your time.
Yeah, you bet, and thank you. We'll, if, as some of this housing, some of the housing projects develop, we'll stay in touch and stay informed and to, on how those are progressing.
Perfect.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christina.
Have a great rest of your day.
You as well.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any liaison updates? Okie dokie, with that, we will adjourn the meeting at twelve fifteen. Thank you everyone very much for your time. Barry, have a safe trip back and we'll see you tomorrow.